YouTube is on and so is the audio, just so everyone knows.
Call order, roll call, City of Mayville Special Finance Committee meeting September 8, 2025, 6:00 PM. Take your role.
Alder Person Newman?
Here.
Alder Person Smith?
Here.
Alder Person Henkel is excused. We have a forum.
Number two, citizens comments? Any citizens comments on this part of the meeting? Seeing none. Number three, discuss the possible action. Recommendation bids for the 2025 River Knoll Drive Storm Utility Extension.
Hey, why don't you get a little, oh, never mind, here he is.
Good evening. Your package should be the bid tabulation for the River Knoll Drive Street Utility Extension. We received eight bids for that project. Seven out of the eight came in under our estimate. Low bid was about $300,000 under our estimate. We have not done any projects with Cartechter doing storm ponds or mass excavations. We did ask for references. Called around on those last week. For the most part, got good reviews. But at this point, we're saying the recommendation of the city is to award a contract to Cartechter for the River Knoll Street Utility Project. Way we had the contract slated was they'd have until June, end of June for completion. So we really won't know their schedule until there be a contract award. We'd hold a pre-construction meeting. My guess would be there if you were starting to fall in. Questions?
We have a question. Inspection Services, is that part of the bid? Or we got it all?
No, that's separate contract.
Great.
So that's your recommendation? We go with a little bidder?
Yes.
And you found that he's, as far as you can tell, he's reliable?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to recommend that bid. Would we accept that bid?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's passed. 3B, discuss the possible, thank you. Discuss the possible action invoice from Lundt Construction and they mount the $13,905.24 for lower dam repairs.
Secretary of Water, say something.
Yes, I received a call from Jack on a Sunday that he was raising the lower dam and he had it up a ways and the cable broke and it came back down, so it was closed. So we contacted our engineer, Cumpel Engineering, and they had a couple firms on that they had contacted to make the emergency repairs. Lundt Construction was the one company that we did go with to make the repairs. First of all, they did a temporary fix and then they were back last Friday and made the permanent fix for the lower dam.
Both the cables on the lower dam got replaced. So they both snapped.
May I ask a question?
Again.
Um.
That's all right.
So what's guarantee of how long that will last?
I think the last ones that were in there are just short of 10 years.
Not very long.
You could just see where the cables were at the bottom and just ended up busting through, right? Because they're mounted at the very bottom of the gate. So just sitting in the water. And the way they're mounted over time, it'd be nice to put a nice rounded clevis on there, but the way it's set up right now, we'd have to wait till the river gets pulled down. So they basically went back on the same way they were before. Brand new cables.
Do you think they'll be good for another 10 years, probably?
Yeah, and I think the next inspection report that comes through from the state, the DNR, we're going to have kind of free repairs on that dam. The bridge is really in bad shape on it.
On the top of the wall?
Yeah. So I think it's going to be coming at that point that it will be pulled down so we could, we could make updates at that time.
We might be able to put a sleeve on them or something, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. Recommend paying the invoice from Lundt Construction?
I have one more question. Hello. So?
I can type on.
What, would we found a bit of getting rid of the dam altogether at some point?
That's, that's a decision the uncle made up here.
Studies in the DNR.
I just wanted it on.
Because that affects that immediate area, but it affects everybody downstream, upstream. So it.
In a negative way?
That's, yeah, that's pretty good to have discussion. We can look at it.
So is that a motion, Bob?
Yeah, I'll still make the motion.
Okay, I'll second that motion for pay Lundt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Number four?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Your adjourn.
All right. Call of Naval Economic Council meeting order at 6:04. Please take your role.
Alder Person Baker?
Here.
Alder Person Smith?
Here.
Alder Person Lee Now?
Pro.
Alder Person Newman?
Here.
Alder Person Olson?
Here.
Alder Person Henkel is excused. We have a forum.
All right. We have for budgets, ladies?
Let's begin through the line of the United States of America and through the Republic of Public Defense, one nation, one God, individual, literally, in this world.
All right. Is there any citizen comments tonight? All right, seeing none. Agenda changes? Do you have any agenda changes? All right, consent agenda or motion move.
I'm going to tell a motion to consent.
Motion by Olson?
I'll second.
Taken by Newman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. All right, Report of Officers, Mayor's report for the month. All right. Want to begin by reminding residents impacted by the Mabel tornado in May of 2025 that relief applications are now being accepted. If you are affected, please visit the Mabel City website to fill up an application. The city council is finalizing the parameters for distribution in this month, and we expect funds to be distributed soon. As I shared last month, SSM Health will be closing their medical clinic in Mayville. Letters will be going out to their patients soon. I've already begun discussing with several healthcare providers and physicians about what options are available moving forward. To that end, I am requesting that the Mabel City Council establish a medical healthcare exploratory committee. This committee will explore ways to better meet the current and future healthcare needs of our community. I've also been working closely with staff on the 2026 city budget. While we are still putting on final figures from the state, I am proposing a seven to 10 cent per $1,000 mill rate increase. This translates to 1.2% to 1.5% decrease for taxpayers. For example, on a home assessed at $250,000, this means an increase of approximately $1,750 to $25. With inflation currently at 2.5%, I believe this is a reasonable and that's necessary adjustment. The city council will continue reviewing and adjusting the budget over the next months. I would like to thank all department heads for their hard work during this process. It is not an easy task, and your efforts are appreciated. In August, Mabel hosted our annual joint review board meeting with the Dodge County, Mabel School District, and Langford Technical College and our city representative. This meeting reviews our tax increment districts, funds, our financial consultants at Ailer's Finance, provided a comprehensive review. I'm proud to report that everything is in good order. We are nearing the completion of our 30-year plan, which will help shape the future of Mabel. A public input meeting will be held at Tate Public Library on Tuesday, September 23 at 5:00 PM. I encourage all residents to attend and share your ideas. Audubon Days will take place from September 19th through the 21st with the annual parade scheduled for the morning of Sunday, September 21st. For more details, please visit the Audubon Days Facebook page. This week, our nation will pause to remember the events on September 11th. As we reflect on that tragic day, I want to extend my deepest thanks to all of our emergency service departments and staff. Without dependable police, fire, and EMS service, our community simply could not function. When someone calls 911, they need help, and our teams deliver. Thank you for your service and commitment. As we enter the winter season, I want to congratulate Jack Hurst on his retirement as the DTW director and wish him the very best in the future. As always, I hope to see you around town. Don't hesitate to say hello. Did I lose my report for the month? All right. Item 682, presentation of the 2025 mayor's certification board. Do you want to read the resolution?
We do not have resolution for it.
All right. All right, so who do you want to start with? IPEX, you want to come up first, I guess?
They were the selected winners for awards. One and six.
All right, come on up. We'll take some pictures, lay the flag, and give you your sign.
Geez.
So this is something new that the street development authority came up with this year? Well, congratulations. Well, does your house tonight? It looks pretty nice.
Yeah, I said it to him. I'm like, hey, you was over there today. So I got to see it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Nate, Texas Jason, McKay, Leeville. Glad you guys were making it. Probably agree.
Thank you.
All right. Mike and Karen, Ingle orders of the last four winners, and we can make it. So thank you all for all you do for the city and make your house look great. So thank you. All right. Administratives report.
Good evening. An update on administrative functions of the city. I've been working with Nicole on drafting the mayor's budget and five-year capital improvement plan. I continue working with the TAG Center to, on their 2025 capital projects to make sure they qualify for the grant reimbursement from the Bakhuba Foundation. CDA has scheduled three presentations with, for the website design services that will be happening at their next meeting on September 24th. Open enrollment for the city of Mabel employees is scheduled for October 8th, and we will add additional dates will be added as needed. Meetings attended, Joint Review Board, August 18th, Virtual Comprehensive Plan Committee meeting was on August 21st. I attended the utility and standing commission, standing committee meetings on August 25th, Plan Commission and CDA meeting on August 27th, Community Advisory Meeting was at Avina. Avina was Crossroads. They have done a rebranding, renaming, so they're located on Clark Street. Park Rec and TAG Center meeting on September 3rd. Webinars and training I attended was the League Roundtable. Update on current legislative topics was on August 12th. And moving, I also attended the webinar on moving Cassell system to the cloud, and that was on August 13th. Projects in the process, wastewater treatment plan. I met with Greg Gunderson from MSC to just have an update on the status of the wastewater treatment plant project. I attended the St. John daycare walkthrough on August 25th. And then staffing updates. The library is hiring two pages, and the TAG Center hired two lifeguards and two, for the front desk. Upcoming tasks, I'm updating the site ordinance of the directive from Plan Commission. I'm working with Wisconsin Economic Development and will come up with a red line version for Plan Commission to consider. And finally, continue working with Nicole on the 2026 budget. And that's all I have for this evening.
All right, then your clerks report.
During the month of August, Deputy Hunt and I attended the Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association Annual Conference in La Crosse. The conference provided a wide range of valuable sessions from new clerk training to open records and offered the opportunity to connect with professional colleagues and vendors from across the state. I'm also happy to report that we have already received the scholarship money we awarded, so a total of $1,070 came back to the city to offset the cost of that conference. I have also, as of this month, received my certification from UW Green Bay for completion of three years of the Clerks and Treasurers Institute totaling over 100 hours in training. This important milestone will support my eligibility for municipal clerk certification in 2026. Additionally, I attended training in Madison through the Wisconsin Elections Commission as I continue working toward becoming a state certified elections trainer. In the office, I've been preparing items for your consideration, including tonight, the proposed ordinance change related to the new winter parking permit. That one took a little time. And additionally, the draft update to the city's comprehensive plan will be headed to Common Council soon. A community open house on the proposed plan is scheduled for Tuesday, September 23 at 5:00 PM at the library. This meeting will provide residents the opportunity to review the draft, hear about proposed updates, and offer feedback before the final document moves to Plan Commission in October, and ultimately for council approval in December. That's what I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 16, July 2025, monthly check registers and approvals of bills. Should we answer that in your packet? Your motion to approve of bills?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Nick Newman, any discussion, questions? All right, take your role, please.
Alder Person Smith?
Aye.
Alder Person Newman?
Aye.
Alder Person Olson?
Aye.
Alder Person Lee Now?
Aye.
Alder Person Baker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, Controller of Treasurers, monthly report.
From a finance department update, there hasn't been any major things that have stand up in the last month. For the 2026 budget, I've been continuing to work with Stephanie and the mayor for the budget. I collaborated with Cassell to create a cleaner budget format for a simpler process. And I will be monitoring updates for the Department of Revenue regarding the state credit amounts that we will be receiving for the budget. My pay online implementation, department heads remain in test mode, and a few issues are still being addressed. IT has been contacted. I'm just waiting to find out. I'm just waiting to find out the availability of the kiosks for each of the departments that we use in them. Tax collection is coming up. I'm going to start preparing for that, as well as audit. Preliminary audit will start in October. And I'm going to a Levina workshop in October hosted by ours.
All right, thank you. All right, Utility Commission, next meeting is September twenty-second at 5:00 p.m. Library, next meeting, September eleventh at 6:00 p.m. Public Works Committee, next meeting, September twenty-second at 6:00 p.m. Personnel Committee, next meeting, September twenty-second at 6:00 p.m. Public Safety Committee, next meeting, September twenty-second at 6:00 p.m. Finance Committee, next meeting is September twenty-second at 6:00 p.m. Park and Recreation Committee, next meeting is October first, 2025, at 3:30 p.m. Planning Commission, next meeting date is September twenty-fourth at 4:00 p.m. Meeting Development Authority, next meeting is September twenty-fourth at 5:00 p.m. All right, New Business, approved the minutes of July eighteenth, 2025, Special Common Council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Smith.
I'll second that.
Second by Baker. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? All right, seeing none, all the favors say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Approved the minutes of August eleventh, 2025, Common Council meeting. Is there a motion?
Take that motion.
Motion by Newman, second by Smith. Any additions or corrections on them, the minutes? All right, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right, Presentation Review of the 2026 Budget for the City of Mabel, including debt service, library, capital improvements, non-major governmental, and express enterprise ones. All right, so you guys should have a nice, beautiful binder of this.
I have the general fund. You'll see a green sheet. So above the green sheet is all the general fund, and then behind that is all the other
Okay. So, so this weekend, we worked on the budget, and we came up with a seven to ten cents per mill increase, per thousand increase.
Can you repeat that again?
Seven to ten cent increase on the mill rate per thousand. So today, we did get new numbers in, and we're going to have to make some more adjustments. But I still think we can accomplish seven to ten cents increase, but we are going to have to make more adjustments. We're still waiting for some tax assessments from industry. We haven't got that from the state yet, so that might make a difference as well. But right now, this is just the numbers that we have in front of us. That's what we're going with. We just see put a few wages and salaries and health insurance increases of three hundred and seventy-three thousand. So we already cut out three hundred and fifty-five thousand of the budget over the last week. So more to come, I guess. The next, the first meeting we're actually talk about it will be in two weeks. All right. Meantime, guys got any questions? Let Nicole or myself know.
Process is the same as it's always been. We're going to have five or six budget meetings and go through the recommended mayor or administrative budgets, and then council weighs in along with the departments.
Somebody doesn't like something, you put it on a parking lot, and at the end of the process, we take up the parking lot.
Okay, thanks.
So, yeah, and then we're at, you said three fifty-five was the cut that you made for the weekend, right? And then you said three seventy-three was the raise of the?
Healthcare raise, you know?
Thank you.
Right, and your overall budget, Nicole, what was it, two point eight million?
The overall budget, two point seven, two million seven hundred, oh, just kidding, two hundred, two million eight hundred seventy-three thousand nine sixty-two.
But their overall budget actually is four point eight, right?
Four point eight, four six?
Yeah.
This is just the presentation, there's no action to be taken on this?
No, that's right. All right, seeing we should move on. Discuss the possible action of 2026 to 2030, five-year capital improvement plan. That's on the back of your binder, there should be a spreadsheet. This gets adjusted every year of the working document.
Has anything changed on that?
We did adjust a bunch of stuff on this.
But further out, not for this year?
We put stuff in the twenty-seven, because next, twenty-seven, we borrow more money for twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So this year, we didn't borrow any money, we borrow last year for twenty-six, so yes.
So basically, every other year?
Typically, we borrow every other year.
Unless it, unless we reach a number that necessitates borrowing. We try and hold it to a million or a million three usually?
Typically, we want our, we want our debt to be about one and a half times the budget. So it would be like seven point two million. Right now, we're right there on seven hundred, we're on seven hundred million dollars per debt, just the city debt, not the bill over.
Does it have any restraint? Are we going to hit that or no?
We're going to need to do some adjustments.
When does that need to be turned in by you? Does that, one?
Since the second in December.
So is it ready for?
I'm sorry, a bit too summer, I'm sorry.
Is it ready for a motion? Are we done with this? It says it's possible action.
Right, I think, I think the CIP for this year is fine.
Yeah.
I mean, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, whatever, we always make adjustments the year of the budget, depending on what we need. We have to move things around, you know? There was some stuff, like the fire department needed new furias, so we moved stuff around so that you can get the new furias, and there's a couple other department judge from stuff, smaller stuff that we adjusted for.
I don't know, do we know enough about 2026 CIP to make a motion now? Are there any changes to that?
Well, I think we just make a motion for the 2026 CIP, and then we?
Yeah, there's really, there's really not, the big ticket, the big ticket is our, I think so. Our EMS. We're talking ambulance, what we're talking?
I'll make a motion to, to the 2026 CIP.
I'll second that motion.
If I can have one comment.
Sure.
Just so you realize, as your 2025 projects are completed, you may have money that was borrowed to do those projects left over, and then you, we carry that money forward. So that's going to change, you know, where your money is, how these projects are being funded, so.
That's, that's been our practice over the years, too.
But that isn't reflected yet. I don't know what that, I don't know what that period over yet, so that numbers aren't reflected in number proportions. Your projects will stay the same, so your plan?
So we can, so, yeah, so we can pass it now, but we're going to have to make amendment to change then in January, depending on how much we're carrying over.
Yes, but it's actually your capital budget that's going to be changing, and that you're not adopting, that is your plan. So if your capital budget is adopted with your budget, that'll be reflective of the
Any more questions?
My motion stands.
All right, take your role.
Elder Person Smith.
Aye.
Elder Person Newman.
Aye.
Elder Person Olson.
Aye.
Elder Person Leibnau.
Aye.
Elder Person Baker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, Introduction of Ordinance 2025, dash 2025, an ordinance to repeal and replace section three nine seven, the S70 of municipal quotas in Mabel related to winter parking
It does in the packet.
Hold on to the resolution.
It's about two pages.
All right, you guys should have had that in the packet, any other questions? Am I allowed to introduce it?
I will introduce it so long as the police chief assures me that he's looked at it and agrees with the need for one.
That's how this works. So it's either going to be, you're going to introduce it, or you're not going to introduce it.
Well, then I will wait for somebody else to stick their neck out.
The draft ordinance was run by the police department.
It was?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any answers from the mayor? I'll take yours. I'll introduce it.
All right, thanks. Discuss the possible action establishing the fee for the Mabel winter street parking permit. All right. What do we have? We do figure we're going to, we figure it's going to be someone paying forty or fifty dollars for winter parking.
I don't know, we, who's, who, well, that, this is this year of pronouns, who's we?
Me and Nicole.
You and Nicole.
This is going to be part of the budget.
All right.
For reference, a three-month municipal parking permit is forty dollars currently. So we need you guys to set it now so we could collect it for winter, and then annually, we'd address it with the fee schedule.
So if we establish the fee before we agree to, we just introduced the ordinance, we didn't pass it, is are we getting ahead of ourselves?
We could table this to next meeting.
Okay.
So your?
I think that'd be a good idea.
I'll make motion by Smith to table for next month. Your second?
I'll second that.
Second by Leavell, any discussion?
Yeah, that'll give the older people who pay attention time to get some input from their constituents about, about how that might help or hurt them.
Okay. All the favor, a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right, Discuss the Possible Action Resolution six zero zero eight, dash 2025, approved Class B for minimal beverages, Class B intoxicated liquid license for Tomcats, one-one-one, Salt Main Street.
I'll happily make that motion.
Motion by Smith.
I'll second.
Second by Leavell. Any discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Discuss the Possible Action Resolution six ten, dash 2025, Resolution Decreasing Sanitary Sewer Service Fees to Close on Revenue Bonds Approved, one, one, one hundred and ten percent debt coverage.
A little bit of explanation.
So what was brought forward to you in February of 2025 was a two-step sewer rate increase that was supposed to take place on March first of 2025 and January one of 2026. And all that was approved on March, or February tenth of 2025, was for the first step of the sewer rate increase on, that you approved on January thirteenth, and that took place on February one. So we need, in order to close on the DNR loan funds for the millions, Courtney, how many millions of dollars? That they will be closing in October, and in order to close on that loan, we need to prove that we can cover our debt at a hundred and ten, ten percent. So. The total is thirty-one million, but there's four hundred, there's about five million in principal forgiveness off the top of that. So in order to close on that loan, we need the second step to the rate increase.
Can you repeat that again?
Courtney, come on up here once for a second, please.
I missed the forgiveness.
So there's, the whole revenue is, the whole loan is thirty-one million dollars, but there's five million coming off the top of that in the form of principal forgiveness. In order to close on the loan, Aylers had sent out a standard template resolution in which utilities commission approved phases one and two. And then when it came to common council, it decided to only approve phase one for starters, but the DOA is going to need both in place in order to start paying back, paying us back on that loan.
Okay.
So I think our first repayment is one point seven, as soon as we, one point seven million, as soon as we close on this.
So.
Thank you.
Yep.
So that five million, though, is like three million debt and forgiveness, right? One point six is going on fund mail?
Yeah, so there's, there's three million in principal forgiveness. We maxed out our principal forgiveness. There's another additional million in phosphorus compliance credit that we get as principal forgiveness, and then focus on energy. We're in both, I mean, we're not sure the total number is on focus on energy, but the DNR also matches our focus on energy funds, which will get us close to five million total off the top of the loan.
What about the one point six that we're going to use for fund mail?
And that'll, yeah, and that's included as well. So it will be down to about twenty-five, twenty-six that close out.
And if it's fees, these fees are two car, right? One's going to be a service, the service connection fee itself, right? And the other one's actually the flow increase?
It's, it's all inclusive. It's, I don't know how to, so they, the implementation happens over, yeah, the flows, the totalizing, as well as the meter sizing. So there's base fees and then volume fees, and there are different appropriations for each. So we have about twelve different meter sizings that that would apply to.
Right.
This is not the Public Service Commission thing like water. This is an optional thing, but you're saying that we're kind of have to do this to get our?
Yeah, this is an optional, this is something we have to do to be in compliance to get it all.
I don't, I don't know. The only, half the complaints I get from citizens are, are the utility commission, state of the water, and the state of the water bills, and sewer bills. So I don't know. I'm not sold on this. But I don't know, seems to me you are.
Well, because we don't have a choice. I mean, I didn't realize that this is too full. I thought there was, we're just increasing the usage, so that's what I thought we're charging for, but we're charging for that, we're also charging for the meter size as well. I think it came out the wrong, the average usage, you know, per average person was going to go up like somewhere between ten, eleven dollars a month. On top of the, right, yeah. Is that a good estimate, Courtney? All right, so I take a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by the Baker.
I'll second that.
Second by Newman. Any discussion? All right, take your role.
Elder Person Baker.
Aye.
Elder Person Newman.
Aye.
Elder Person Olson.
Aye.
Elder Person Leibnau.
Aye.
Elder Person Smith.
No.
Motion carries.
All right, Discuss the Possible Action Resolution six zero one one, dash 2025, Resolution to Establish a Medical and Healthcare Advisory Committee. All right, so in my mayor's comments, I said that SSM Health is closing, the medical center as far as the doctors are concerned. I did have a brief conversation with their management team up there, and this is what they're going to do. So I think that going forward, we should probably figure out what's the best options for our residents on medical and health needs, whether we could try to get another clinic to come into town, or what would that look like? So I guess I'd like to establish a five-member panel to come up with some kind of, you know, health and medical options going forward for our community.
I have a question.
Sure.
Have we had anybody reach out to us yet?
No. I reached out to a couple providers. I've had one pretty good conversation. At the end of the day, it comes down to money. I'm not going to lie, so it comes down to it. So we also have Tiff District, so if you're thinking about coming, I said we have incentive plan to come build a new facility, so we'll see.
All right, so the building that we have right now, does SSM actually own it?
Yes.
And have they expressed anything that we know of where they want to sell it for?
I don't know if they're going to sell it.
No, they're just, they're taking the doctors off, they're taking the clinic.
They're going to keep their rehab center open, yeah?
But that? But that was in the lower level, I thought.
That's where it's gonna stay.
So what about the main level? Just no activity whatsoever?
That's kind of what I've been told. Which is a shame because, you know, Mabel's been affiliated with St. Agnes Hospital since eighteen eighty, eighteen ninety. Kind of a shame that, uh, municipality our size is gonna go without for this time. So, so I think it's imperative that we put something together to explore different options. I mean, Mabel's been here for a hundred and seventy five years plus, so I don't think going away is bad for him.
Yeah, you look at Aurora, where that went, and you look at now, where we're at now. Got three times, she used to walk right from her house right up to the office and the clinic, you know. And those days are gone. It is about money, it's kinda sad.
Well, there's only a handful, I can tell on one hand how many healthcare providers are in the state.
Well, here, even here, just here, the options we have.
Right. I entertain a motion, I guess.
I'll make that motion.
Your second.
I'll second.
Motion by Newman, second by Olson. Any more discussion? All right, well, if anybody wants to be part of this committee, please let me know. All right.
Are you gonna, you gonna hold that up for council and citizen or just council?
As far as council members.
For your five, you said you're gonna have five people on the advisory.
So is this open to the public as well?
The composition in the resolution is ideally, it will be one licensed healthcare provider, one mental health professional, a business or economic development representative, a community member and an elected official.
Perfect, that's all I wanted, though. Thank you.
I think you're volunteering.
Yeah, no problem.
All the favor say aye.
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 Pose, carry. All right, discuss the possible action operators licenses. You see them in front of you in mass? Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
All right, motion by Newman, second by Smith. Any discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, carry. Discuss the possible action temporary operators license application for October fourth, twenty twenty five. Cork and Colors Wine Walk. All right, so this is basically something new that Jessica Lawrence is putting together as a wine walk here in town. And we're gonna need to establish this by order. Temporary, right, temporary operator?
Nope, they already exist in our ordinance. It's just not something that's widely utilized. Uh, our municipal code allows that allowance in state statute. So, um, it's for a period of one to fourteen days, depending on the event. They can only get two within a year, otherwise they have to get a regular operator's license. We really haven't had a need for it previously. But they opted for it, so these will be good just for the day of the event.
So it's gotta be okay to, for one to fourteen days? These people just be taking their test and get certified and then they can hold that for one to two years?
Like? If they chose to, so the state does not absolutely require that temporary operators take the safe beverage service class. However, it is a best practice. That's what the Department of Revenue.
Okay.
Because it's such a short truncated period. Uh, but if they ever, you know, if someone did a lot of volunteering, like I said, there's only two allowable in a year. So they would be forced to get an operator's license where they have to take the class. And then they could opt for the one or two year option. Um, these do also go through a background check like anyone else does, so.
And they, and the city clerk can give them direction on what they can and can't do during this time. Right, there you go.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Olson, second. Second by Leavine. Any more discussion? I will not be able to attend, but I hope they have a good time and I'm kind of bummed I'm gonna miss it, so. All right, all the favor. Yeah, all the favor say aye.
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 Pose, carry. Discuss the possible action change of alcohol beverage pointed agent for Quick Trip three three six. Located at one twenty one North Main Street. Agent information is Derek Stallman. And you see his address. Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Motion by Newman.
I'll second it.
Second by Smith.
I have a question.
Yep.
Uh, so Brian, can you check this out too as well?
As far as?
For the agents, for the, you know, Quick Trip BP, whatever.
Yep, all of the applications, including the initial, I forget what it's called, the, the long form of the paperwork, comes over by us, we do a background check and I go through everyone inside. So everything gets going.
And anyone who deals in alcohol or tobacco.
All right, any more discussion? All the favor say aye.
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 Pose, carry. All right, discuss the possible action bid for the twenty twenty five River Knoll Drive Street until the extension.
Make that motion.
I'll second it. Motion by Newman.
And that's for the Kert, uh, Kertchner Brothers?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Second by Smith. Any discussion? Question I have is that, do we wanna attach a funding source? You know, funding source for this three, thirteen thousand eight hundred, or thirteen thousand nine hundred and five.
Oh, you're on the next one?
Oh, I'm on the next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
One and a half.
One and a half.
Thank you, Brad.
You turn the page and it kind of. All right, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, carries. All right, discuss the possible action invoice for windup construction in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred and five dollars, twenty four cents for the lower dam repairs.
Make a motion.
Motion by Newman.
Tie it on the contingency.
Second it.
There is some money available in dam repair as well, right?
Yes, they have about two thousand dollars in that.
But we might need that for the DNR requirements that are coming up. It's.
How much money is there?
What's that? So contingency was, was it seven for the tornado sirens? And it was four thousand for the comprehensive plan?
Um, and we had fifty six hundred.
Fifty six hundred?
We got enough for covered it.
Yeah.
All right, we end up, contingency, so that's what you said, you're right, does your motion?
Correct, that was, yeah, I attached to that.
All right.
You should take the role ones.
We're still having discussion.
Well, I know, but I'm, I'm jumping ahead of you so you don't just ask for.
You must have turned the page too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Talking about the dam repairs.
All right, any more discussion?
Need a second.
He said, Smith said.
Oh, Tony, thank you.
All right, sir De Baker.
Any more discussion? All right, take your role.
Other person Newman.
Aye.
Other person De Baker.
Aye.
Other person Smith.
Aye.
Other person Leavine.
Aye.
Other person Olson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, discuss the possible action, the certified survey map request for parcel division number two five one twelve sixteen one four 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 dash zero one zero at five four six North Main Street number one. Carry Karen Weber. Your motion?
Can somebody hear from the planning commission?
Yes, the planning commission approved this. Don was, uh, running.
I'm gonna make the motion even though I'm not on the planning.
All right, motion by Smith. Second by De Baker. Any discussion? All the favor say aye.
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 Pose, motion carries. Discuss the possible action certified survey map request for parcel combination two five one twelve sixteen three three four three dash zero six three at four oh seven site staff, Scott, Shelley High Park. Your motion on this one? This was approved by planning as well.
I make that motion.
Motion by Olson, your second. Second by Smith. Any more discussion? All the favor say aye.
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 Pose, motion carries. Discuss the possible action, the job description for the Department of Public Work, Work Performing Position, that should be in your packet. Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Motion by Newman.
I'll second it.
Second by De Baker. Any discussion? Jake, you approve this? When will this be posted? Now?
Now.
Good. All right, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Discuss the possible action, the allocation guidelines for the tornado, or donated tornado relief fund. I think we left it, uh, last time we talked about this, we didn't quite finalize all the requirements. Do we want to waive it?
Were we gonna have a map too from the chief? Correct?
Or not?
Okay.
Just on the other question.
Gotcha. Didn't see that.
I do have a question, though. Did we, I don't recall us having like half a mound or, you know, did we cut it off at a certain point?
No.
Thought we capped it at five hundred dollars.
It was not an official motion. So technically, no.
And then, uh.
We didn't chat about that.
Do we wanna waive it somehow or no? If someone, someone's displaced, does he have more than someone else?
All right, so.
I guess how many, we should ask, how many applications we have so far?
Um, as of the date I wrote the memo in the packet, there were fourteen. We had some gotten one more in, so fifteen. Uh, the vast majority fall within that southern part of the city with maybe three kind of outliers. They range all over the board for requests. Some have given quotes and proof of loss. Some, we are just taking at their word because we did not require they provide anything. And I don't know if that's something you would like us to try to obtain before you have anyone review these and put out costs because some are claiming quite a bit of loss with no backup.
I was one of them, you know, and I've gotta come up with like four thousand dollars in e-darcoms between my vehicle and my home. Where am I come up with that, I don't know. So I, I guess that's why I'm wondering, if there are several, then maybe like a five hundred dollar cap.
And we do still have over a month to accept them.
Yeah. I think there might be some technical issues with a public official applying for donated. I'm not going to, because I went through that. I went through that rodeo once before and paid two and a half percent and people didn't know the whole story, so.
Give any recommendations?
Does it need more work?
No. You got, you got any recommendations we should do as far as parameters?
Well, Nicole, how much was sitting in the fund over?
Twenty eight thousand, one hundred and fifty.
So I don't know if you wanna give preference maybe to individuals who are in that tornado area. You know, I think some of the stuff.
That's why we had the map.
North might be, these still have submitted applications about three accounts. So I don't know if that.
But if they're not in the map, I don't think we're gonna accept. Isn't that what we said?
Right, I think if there's money left over, we should accept them.
Correct.
Really?
Preference given to the.
So then anybody can tell them?
I, I.
What else we can do, I mean?
I highly doubt there's gonna be any money left over though.
Could be close. Well, if there's twenty thousand dollars, we're giving five hundred dollars. Figure we get thirty people. You know, that's fifteen grand if there's thirty of them left over.
I don't know if you guys wanna set a cap on certain, you know, there's what, five different criteria that they could apply under? If you wanna put a cap on that or if you want to order importance, you know, displacement over tree removal? I don't know.
All right, so with the displacement, um, my question is, did they have to pay to go somewhere else to stay?
We have not required any proof of their request, so we are taking them at their word. Um, then, you know, we still have until October fifteenth, so if you guys wanted to table this and really think about it for a month and come back with some ideas.
I agree for that. Bob, Bob loves a planned table thing.
I'd rather table for two weeks and have a special meeting at the next.
Oh, with the special?
Yeah, that way.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so table it for two weeks.
Right. Is that, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Your second.
I'll second it.
Second by Leavine, any discussion? All right, we'll come back with some ideas, I guess. All the favor say aye.
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 Pose.
Aye. Same with soul.
All right, approves with one objection. All right. Item nine, close session, pursuant to the statute, one nine dot eight five, we celebrate the motion of purchase of public property, investment in public funds, conduct others specified public activities for, have other parties require a close session. Discuss regarding agreement, purchasing options for, no, for self.
We gotta make a motion to go out and close that.
We need a motion.
Motion by Newman. Your second. Second by Olson. All right.
Take role.
Yep.
Other person Newman.
Aye.
Other person Olson.
Aye.
Other person Leavine.
Aye.
Other person Smith.
Aye.
Other person Baker.
Aye.
Motion carries, please let me take them.